Was there any concerns about grass?
Yes, that's one.
The celebration.
No, absolutely. I wish I could.
Don't ask Manny.
I don't notice this. The weather is really hot.
Hey, happy anniversary. Good way to spend the day.
It's the system part. Why is it the same? Aren't you happy to the system?
Just eight.
Just eight back.
Eight's the cover wire by the way.
Yeah. Anytime this week. Well, Thursday was so good for me. I'll be on the balcony. Yeah, tomorrow. Take a look. Yeah, cool. We'll call tonight's meeting in the Boyd City Council order offering to your attention. We have a revised agenda and it's under closed session. Non-elective personnel will see addition to the agenda. Manny, would you take a roll call, please?
Tony Ginkler.
Yes.
Bob Richard.
Yes.
Kent Miller.
Here.
Rick Brown. Matt Audi. Lloyd Latrell.
Present.
Robert Peterson.
Present.
Matt Audi will be joining us. He's running behind apparently from meeting out of town, so he'll be here shortly. He'll stand with me to the indication and the pleasant. Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to come together this evening to discuss the business of our community and give us the knowledge to make the good decisions that will benefit our community. And please bring us some much needed rain. Be with our farmers as they are harvesting a good crop and be with them as they're sowing the next crop. This is very important for our community. Be with our youth and our administrators of our schools as we're well into our school year. And in your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lloyd, do you have anything?
Not right now, I don't think.
I was gonna say something. I've been getting love calls. You know, I don't, I don't want to stir up a mess. Every year we keep getting more and more and more green piles east of my house. And it's getting where you can't believe it. There's no open windows. It's noisy and I, there's no answer because I know that. We gotta do this. I, I can only emphasize how important it would have been if you'd had this ETJ in place six, seven years ago. So, and I, I'm not knocking Co-op. And I know they gotta do what they gotta do, but I, I hope someday we can find a solution to that.
Well, moving forward, maybe there's something they can treat it with to keep the dust down and I think.
And they do cover it. Boy, they've taken a lot of issues, these big crops.
I think those big crops moved wide out in the elders. But it's, but on the flip side, it sure is nice that we have that green.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And that's why I say, I don't, I don't want to stir up one of those things. I, I would hope that something else would be there. Like, you know, one elder who doesn't clear out east of town. And that would be a super solution like that. Who is there and so, hopefully someday.
Well, I'm sure they're aware of their neighbors and it'll be good.
They're, they're a very poor people, Lord, so I'm not, not.
But I understand though, if you're there and it's right next to your properties, it's a lot different than it is on my side. And I totally understand. Thank you. Thank you, Tony.
Bob, do you have anything?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you. Katie, do you have anything at this time?
I do. Let my, I'm gonna chime in. Elections, as you all know, they're the new long pass last, this year, I guess, for, that affects local elections. And we've kind of been waiting to hear back on the league of Kansas County's colleagues, their opinion on this, as well as Secretary's state. It has, I just got an email today from the county election official, which of course is our county clerk, that there will be April 2016 elections. The law is, wasn't real clear on that, but I think all the parties that be got together and decided that that's what's going to happen. So we are going to proceed that way here, here in the city. Those seats that are vacant, or not vacant, excuse me, that will be up for election. We have four council seats as well as a mayor. And the deadline for filing is same as always, 10 weeks before the election, which will be January 26th, 2016. So we will proceed as, as normal as our charter ordinance dictates for this coming election. Things will change and get a little interesting after that. And the procedure for doing this is to adopt a charter ordinance which complies with the new state law, which says that we need to have elections in the fall of odd number of years, which the next one would be November of 2017. We don't have any vacancies coming up for that. So ours first one will be November of 2019. So what will happen is those seats that will, and this is presuming you want to keep your four-year, keep your same system. I need to change anything at this point, but this is presuming you want to keep four, four-year terms for everybody. Is that those seats which are Matt, Bob Richard, Tony, and then are vacant, which should be Charlene's, their term is to expire in April of 2018. The way the league is interpreting this is that that term will now actually extend until January of 2020. The election will be held in November of 2019, but those that are elected in November of 2019 would not take office until the second week of January 2020. So those four individuals will have a long, a long term. In addition, those that are elected in April of 2016 will also have a long term. Instead of going through April of 2020, they will actually go through January of 2022 with an election held in November of 2021. So we actually have to have two periods where we have essentially five and a half year seats. And that is to come into compliance with this. The alternative to that is to have one year, have kind of a hybrid one-year term. This is what had been proposed by the league for those cities that have elections in the way that we do right now. So that's to be, to be held and handled in the future. That would be adopted by charter ordinance sometime in the next year or so. But for now, the word is we will have elections in November 2016 for four seats plus the mayor.
April what?
April 2016, this coming spring.
So my term would run up to November.
January of 2020.
January.
The election will be held in November of 2019, but what they're doing is they're making this matchup with the rest of the November elections, which your, your elections are held in November, but they don't take their seats until January. So the election will be held in November, but your term largely continue until January 2020. So that, that we get on the, the odd number fall election, which is what they, they want. So that just came down today from county. So we need to get the word out that people need to take the proper steps to, you know, apply and such for those five spots in April. Questions? I went through that kind of fast. We will go, when we, but it comes time to do that charter ordinance, we will extensively go through all the different options. You certainly don't have to do the way I just proposed with those extended terms. But that's, that's one, one way to do it. We will discuss that probably sometime after the election for sure. We don't need to do anything right away because again, we won't have a fall odd year election until 2019. We've got some time to see and watch.
Would Charlene's seat have been up next year?
Charlene's seat is not up until that, same one as yours, that January 2020.
We can't even get anybody just to walk in. How are we gonna get people to run for it?
Well, you know, if, if we don't have enough interest, that's something that you may have to amend your charter ordinance and reduce the size of your council, which then affects, you know, do we still do the four wards? Do we do new wards? How do we do that? That's, those are all things to consider. I mean, if we don't have enough people interested, that's really something that we're gonna have to start looking at. By law, we can, second class cities can have anywhere from four to 12 people. So.
And you could go citywide.
Correct. You don't have to have wards. Right. That's kind of something that the state allows, for now, allows local cities to determine on their own. But that is gonna be a discussion that we're gonna have to have after this election, have enough interest.
It's just sad that with all the problems we have today, we can't get people to get involved and hopefully make a difference.
So certainly time to get the word out unless those folks know that they need to go to the county and Chris can give them a long explanation about what they need to do there. So, asking them by January. Anything else, Glenn?
Uh, no, no, I think I kind of covered it. Yeah, you know, it's real confusing, but the thing to keep in mind right now is that 2016 will work as scheduled. But that was our next scheduled election was April coming forward. That's what we would have done under the old, and it'll happen in the spring, just like it. The thing that'll be changed going forward, and this was always the vagueness of the law, shall we say, was what happens after that. And we weren't so sure that 2016 would actually take effect because we really thought maybe 2017 would be the next election, the way the law was written. But they did just clarify that Secretary of State, we got together with all the election officials and I guess they had a conference today. And this was their interpretation of the new election law. We wish they had left that. We know that the cities, the counties and all the local governments wanted to be left in the spring, the way we do it now. Every local government has a different way of doing this actually, but we all do the elections in the spring separated from the state and national. Because we, we think we get lost in that. So the compromise, if there is one, is that we do ours still in odd years rather than even years, which would be the same national election. So we're still separated, but it's pushed to November, elected, take your seat in January versus what we do now. If you're elected in April, you can take your seat immediately in April. So that, that's the big change from spring to fall, but that'll happen going forward. And like Katie said, the other thing that's gonna happen is you're gonna have these extended terms now of the five years. And that's the only way it'll make the map.
What did I say was money?
No, originally that's the way they did it. They, they gave away two things, increased voter turnout if they just folded all the elections into one, it would save money. So, but by having an odd year now, it doesn't save much money. You still have to have a separate election, so I don't really see how that saves money. Will it increase voter turnout? I, I don't know. I don't know. The reason why, I mean, historically we've had this in the spring because this focuses on city elections and local government, county, you know, whatever, to separate the way from what else. And so we, we always thought that worked best for us for turnout for local elections, but you know, they didn't, they didn't listen to that argument. So we have what we have, which just comes, comes to us and now kind of compromise, at least in the odd number of years. But it makes the elections very confusing now. So I guess to keep in mind right now, 2016 will have elections in the spring and we'll adjust from there. So we'll bring back the ordinance and codify that as a component. It'll be complicated, but, and then we'll have to deal with, you know, do we want nine number or what number do you want? They've got to still keep wards. Have, have it at large. There's pluses and minuses to vote. I was in all kinds of areas. The thing about local government, they, the status historically allowed us to do what, what we wanted best for our city and the local government, what it was, five number wards, no wards, nine numbers, 12 numbers, that case that there's wide variation. They've taken a little bit of that discretion away from us now, when we have our elections. Tax lids, of course, you know, we, we addressed that, we did our budget too, but that would come in two years as far as that goes. So, you know, it's affecting us a little bit. But that's, that's what we know as of today. That's, that, that decision was announced some kind of Saturday and they got an email from us. So is that clear to everybody? It's still confusing to us, but you know.
The important thing is we will have elections as scheduled in the spring and figure out the rest.
The rest of it, yeah, we'll have to hammer that out.
Anything else, Katie?
Um, that's it, I think, for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roblin.
Double thanks. We have a new event that's gonna happen here October 18th. We have never done this before. Stories Society sent something here yesterday on this event they're doing. Actually having a, well, kind of a presentation, they call it Art of Homewood Cemetery. Actually, Stories Society will be leading this along with Jim Bell, who of course has been involved with the cemetery for a long time. So they, they contacted the city about what they would like to do here. And, you know, it, it seems kind of odd, but they're, they're, and as they're calling this Art of the Homewood Cemetery, there's a lot of art, there's a lot of history in cemeteries. And of course, Mr. Bell has been around for a long time and knows our cemetery inside and out. And of course, some of our parks and rec people do also. So they're gonna do this little event out, this is the first time they've done that. This is not the Talking Tombstones that they've done in the past. I know that's been popular then. This is something completely different that they're gonna try here on October 18th. So hopefully you get weather for that. I think that's what they're doing. It has nothing to do with Halloween or anything of that sort of, it's not sort of a scary sort of tour or anything like that. It's, it's, it's hopefully, you know, so you have food temperatures, so not too hot, people come out and just kind of listen to what, what the history of our cemetery is. And any cemetery, I mean, it's something I kind of enjoy, but I know their people, it's not their company. Anyway, so they want to make us aware of that. He provides some advertisements, he requires around town about that. So, any questions about that third thing? Venture there on that. So that might be a little bit interesting for people wanting to attend that. So it's, it's free to look over. The other thing that we've kind of talked about on and off for oh, a couple of meetings, a couple of months, it seems like going back, when we had our vandalism in the West Side Park. Absolutely, they come up with sort of a list of things that have been damaged and the issues that have been going on. And it's, it's been ongoing. It's actually more than I thought it was. You can see some of these go back a bit further. And the damage, and I have pictures, I didn't copy all that well, I'll tell you the truth. But anyway, this is just kind of a, a list of here in the summer of 2015, of things that have been damaged in the park out there and different things that happened. These are just kind of the highlights of different things we've dealt with here just this past year. And then we have a list of passengers that have been ongoing out there in the park. And on the second page, we have the question about the insurance. The playground equipment, apparently the, the coverage was dropped on that some years ago. And according to Vals Insurance, the reason was there's a $2,500 deductible for each occurrence. So sometime in the past, the city decided that we're going to, I guess a lot of playground there had to vandalize or broken. So it wasn't, wasn't worth it to keep insurance on the $2,500 stuff for each, each incident out there. So the city has not carried that. Other things out there are happening, and he's looking for more things that would be covered out there in, in the park. But again, the concern is going forward, do we, do we go forward and keep rebuilding and doing something? Or do we need to look at some kind of a security system out there? Or is there something that we need to do in the neighborhood with the neighbors, this kind of like neighborhood lodge type of thing? I don't know. Keep this from happening. I hate to keep repairing and have vandalism and repair and that just within the cycle continuously. This is kind of where we're at as of right now, as far as what has happened in the park. And I will give suggestions for it if you want to do that.
I know in the past, the Chetown Park pool had been vandalized, and put, and the park down there had been vandalized. They put up some cameras and that seemed to really cut it.
I think that might be the way to go with this. They're pretty low cost these days. Everyone understands that, you know, when you're out in public place or whatever, you, you know, you probably have some kind of surveillance like that now. I assume every time I go into a store, there's some security cameras also in there. So I don't think it's, it used to be controversial to do that. It really isn't anymore.
Is the park costly?
Uh, yeah, I think not. And so, and I suspect that's when most of this happens. So, you know, I, I think if nothing else, cameras usually are a deterrent to, I think it's what Matt's opinion had here, is that when you put those up, people are gonna notice the cameras and, you know, you're not gonna want your camera.
Well, when something happens, you go back.
Yeah. True, it was you. Yeah, right, yeah.
Well, that's, that's true, Matt, but you can't always identify. I mean, I had cameras in my store, but I've had guys come in with the intent of stealing something. And they want to come in with a hoodie, which I told my help not to lie, you know. I could see upon the tape where the bottle disappeared. I never did see the guy's fiddies. And so, you know, you have to have it there as a video. I'd like to see us try the camera and if it doesn't work, maybe we need to do away with that park. I don't know.
Well, the price on those has come down a lot.
Oh, yeah.
They have. Fairly expensive. Good quality. Yeah, it used to be a pretty, pretty good investment, but now you can pick them up pretty good, you know. That's, that's the only thing. I mean, you know, the police don't let patrol so much and, you know, you can go by them. And that's somewhat of a deterrent to police presence, but, you know, council, you have something there constantly. I would like the neighbors to be involved with this, you know, to identify people who are damaging the park and everything. That's the best area to stop any.
Yeah, they need to be alert.
So, but it happens like it's me. I mean, how important is it?
Is that ready to move at all?
It is until we win our eyes. That's, you know, most of our restaurants are, are public use. People use them all. You know, we do get, and this is not the only place that gets restaurants vandalized. We get it at Chetown, we get it, you know, other places they do vandalize. But I don't really understand why people do that, but they do it. So, I'm sorry.
Is it?
I guess why, how valuable is that park to the neighborhood? And if it is valuable, then maybe we need to get the neighbors involved in helping us out along with the kids.
I think that's probably the best way to go.
Could we put up more lighting? Would that help?
Could do that too. I mean, there's a lot of different things we can do. Everything's gonna cost a little bit of money, but, you know. Hate to see.
What we're doing's not working right now.
Yeah, it's not, it's not working right. Because if we permanently gone back and replace things over and over and over again, people will, the problem with the restaurant, like I tell you, you can't put cameras inside. And that's, you know, so if you get vandalism inside of a restaurant, we're not gonna be able to.
I bet you're gonna have to see who's.
You'll be able to see who comes and goes, yeah. And that'd give you a clue, but you can't put anything inside of a restaurant.
Do we have a place up there secure where you can put a receiver? Because I ain't gonna get wireless cameras. You're not gonna get anything that will go clear the police phone. You had a place to secure.
For the light, it's for the basketball courts.
Yeah, somewhere, yeah, where it can't be reused.
You could buy a camera system for $300.
Yeah.
Real color, high definition camera.
Yeah, they're pretty good.
They, they work in the dark too.
So, yeah, everything's gonna be do to, you know, make this better. So anyway, this is kind of, you know, what we know has happened there and the path forward aren't gonna be really easy, but we can try.
I think because it's really not fair to, to the parks department to have all this vandalism and then money comes out of their budget. That's pretty discouraging.
Yeah, we have the back.
That's not a lot.
Review and review. We're gonna play, we're gonna, why are we doing this? And it's, yeah, time to see what possible. A goat, yeah. So, yeah, increase security there and then when you go forward with that.
How would you go about appealing to those people who live around there, see if they're up to helping us?
Not, not really sure. I mean, you know, like we've done other things in the past, we can, we can have like a neighborhood meeting. We can announce that people are.
It's a fair enough will. We're kind of spin around, we are.
Well, yeah, we need to find that out. And I would think that people in that neighborhood, be it once, 90% would use the park. I don't know what else, probably use the basketball courts or something.
Tennis courts.
Public tennis and sports. So I, I don't know what the, you know, the usage is inside versus, you know, the rest of the city. Or we can find that out. See what we do. Anyway.
I, I think that camera system would be a good start now.
Okay? All right, we'll cover that.
Have you?
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you. Next time on the agenda is public comments. We have no public comment this evening. We'll go through a public hearing on living assessments on Cherry Street. Any comments on living assessments on Cherry Street?
It really looks good over there.
Yeah, that is. This is on trailer house.
I think in there another duplex or something over there.
I think there is some destruction, I'm not sure. Any comments on the living assessments on Cherry Street? No comments on that, we'll move on with our agenda. Next item is the consent agenda for the September 15th council meeting appropriations, N.A., hiring of Branson Tison for the fire department and the hiring of Skylar Hager for the fire department. There's no questions, I entertain a motion to pass the, the, the. The move by Councilman Audi that we pass the consent agenda into the entirety. Seconded by Councilman Peterson. Is there any comment? No comment. Manny, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Tony Ginkler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Audi?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yep.
Latrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Thank you, Manny. Next time on the agenda this evening is the resolutions, 2015 dash 23 on pit structure located at 200 Roosevelt Drive. Chris, would you address this, please?
Yeah, this is just across the river from the park entrance. Go south about 100 yards or something and that's where this structure's located. It's been vacant for a long time, but one time it's a rail. But they've attempted to repair it, they started to repair it, they guarded it and never got back to it. The problem is now it's conflict with the floodplain resolutions, or the floodplain regulations. You're not gonna be able to spend any more than 50% of the value of the structure without fully complying with floodplain. And at that point, engineers have to tell us what the base flood elevation is at that location. But it might require the structure being elevated on, on stilts actually. So it, it makes it probably prohibitive to deal with, to do anything with that. Either way, it's to be up to the owner to make those determinations, whether he wants to spend that kind of money and, and go that route or, or demolish. I don't know. What this resolution does again is to set the time and date in the future for a public hearing to, to determine what, what consequences would result in this. It'll be up to the owner then to offer his ideas, if he'd like, as far as his ability to pay for renovation, timeframe, that kind of thing, or just demolish.
Go down and looked at that. And I'm wondering at the state that it's in, did they start to refinish it? Or did they start tearing it down and never got finished?
They started to refinish it. And in fact, I think, you see the trusses up against the building. They gave it, ordered the trusses with the intent of rebuilding a roof. But it stalled, it stalled now for like four, five years. Nothing's happened. It's been sold since then, so the guy on, the name on this resolution isn't the guy that started the project. But he, he bought it as is. And it's still languished for sometimes.
Does the owner live in town?
He does.
You have a question?
So, in being used as. So is it being used as storage, is that what it is?
I don't think it's being used for anything at the moment. I haven't been up to, to walk through it or anything like that, and just see from the, from the public part of it.
If they were to ask for variance, could they change it from a domicile to a storage unit?
No. No, not residential, so it exists. Storage is only permitted in commercial or industrial.
I move that we approve resolution.
It's moved by Councilman Miller that we approve resolution 2015 dash 23, unfit structure located at 200 Roosevelt Drive, and was seconded by Councilman Richard. Any further discussion? Those in favor?